Okay, it's six o'clock. It's time to call together. Mount Pleasant Municipal Planning Commission Meeting at this time. I'll ask Robert to give the invocation and corp here to give the pledge of allegiance. If you would, please stand.
Would please bow. Dear gracious Father, we come to you this evening, Lord, and so thankful for this blessed day that you've given us the protection, watching over us and keeping us safe. Father, we ask that you bless this meeting as we move forward. Things that are discussed here are beneficial to all the residents, the city of Mount Pleasant and our wonderful city. We give you thanks and praise and ask all these things in your son, Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is France, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just.
Let the minister request a quote that everyone's in attendance tonight on the board. Item number three tonight is approval of the agenda.
Make a motion. We approve the agenda.
Out of motion. And second, all those in favor? Oppose? Motion carries. Item number four, approval of amendment prior meeting made eleven twenty twenty-one.
Make a motion. We approve the amendment.
Motion, approve the amendments. They are second. Of a second. All those in favor? Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Item number five, flat approval. This time I'll turn it over to Robert.
Uh, yes, sir.
We'll go for that.
I'd like to thank all the board members for being present and all the members from the public. As, as the agenda identifies, owner Alex Seaman, who's not present with us tonight. Mr. Shapiro and Mr. Rhodes are present in reference to work on the agenda before you. It's in regards to a final flat, sure, for section three. We received the final flat, the latest revised, and there had to be some easement work done. Widening the easement back behind existing structures there in section two. So we received the latest revised on the twenty-eighth. We started our review approximately six, one, June one. I haven't had time to really dig into the final flat. But there were some immediate comments that were taken and you had that in front of you. And Mr. Hager from Lozen Associates, he is present tonight. I'm going to let him speak to it. I will let the board know that the construction drawings are at a point to be approved. So the final flat and the changes on the final flat is the only thing that is, you know, will be before us when the project's ready to move forward. The construction documents have been approved. And Mr. Hager, like I said, is here. He can go in more detail on the comments that were provided for the final flat. So I'll turn it over to him.
Good evening. Yeah, as Robert mentioned, the construction drawings are at a point where we can say that they're ready to be approved. So the next step would be to modify the plats accordingly. When they worked through some of the comments on the construction drawings, they realized that some of the drainage easements needed to be widened. And that included some lots in the previously approved section. So their existing single-family lots with houses on them that are occupied by residents where they need to modify the drainage easements that run behind the back property line to accommodate the new construction. So in order to do that, they've got to take the section two plat and revise that accordingly. Now, what we have in front of us is a plat for section three. And there's a note that just kind of points to that area. It's lots ninety-two through ninety-five. Kind of in the upper left-hand corner. And that note's helpful, but it really needs to be on a revised plat for section two. So with that in mind, we're hoping to consider possibly section two and section three at next month's meeting so that we can kind of see the full picture, if that's your, your will here tonight. Any questions about that?
So what, so what we're really looking into is going back on these properties here and they have to receive, you know, get easements and stuff from the current owners?
Yes, and what I understand from Mr. Shapiro, they're already working with those property owners to explain that change and secure those easements. They would have to be signatories to that revised plat. So we'll see all the owners and all the signatures reflected on that revised plat for section two. At the end of the day, it should help solve a lot of existing drainage problems. So that's what we're hoping to see.
Are the easements going out through section one or are they adequate for drainage?
Yeah, I believe the main area of concern was that sharp corner. That goes around, it's really the southwest corner of the property. So it goes, originally, I think it was a fifteen-foot easement. They're widening that to twenty to accommodate just a little bit more capacity. And that goes around that corner with some improved swells. And then after that point, everything kind of remains the same. So the way they've identified it, it's only going to impact those few lots that they're working with now.
The north pond has been removed as a result of the proposed construction.
Well, they're going to try to just pass it through as opposed to holding it somewhere.
Right. And that should benefit that corner a lot.
What's the recommendation on that action that's taken then?
My recommendation is that there's no action tonight. We just consider this plat along with hopefully a revised plat for section two at next month's meeting, whenever they can coordinate with the specific property owners and get that all lined out.
There'll be no detention on this side?
Uh, well.
There is on lot thirty-three.
Yeah, so there, on the other side of the hill, there's a large lot that shows a very large.
Pass through here and contain down.
Not through the whole site, but there's a break where the water starts flow the other direction.
One in the middle, it kind of like comes down to it now, one towards the middle of it.
Yeah, yeah. So there is a lot that's a little larger than the rest and it shows a pretty significant PUDE. That's part of that single-family lot. And then there's some notes reflecting how that lot's supposed to be addressed and how certain structures should be in certain locations. Robert and I are talking about how to handle that from an enforcement standpoint. If there's something else we need to do to make sure that it's handled properly.
So what you're telling us, that's our recommendation, this board don't need to act on this tonight and?
That's my thought. Obviously, it's your decision. We received this late in May. They've been really focused on getting those construction drawings to the point and addressing our concerns, which we appreciate. The good news is that we are to that point and now we just need to address these plats, so.
And my only concern would be knowing what it's like sometimes to get easements. Do we anticipate easements in a month?
That's a good question from Mr. Shapiro in our conversation.
The thing is, I don't see this board spending a lot of time and stuff on this tonight. If that's your recommendation, then that's what the city's paying you for in the office.
If you're not going to approve anything, you're set with all the flooding we already got going on there. That would be not there wise at this point.
I think it should wait and make sure we have all the easements and everything in order as far as before we act on this. I know we have some people that signed up for this. I don't want to sit up here tonight and I know this board don't if we're not going to act on this tonight and listen to, you know, conversations discussed, so, you know.
Some of the people may have questions for the engineer. I don't know if that's something you want to open the meeting up to or not. But I know they're having ongoing conversations with those property owners. Hopefully, we need to see a resolution.
Well, I don't really see any need for that tonight because we're going to have to come right back here next month and then make a decision on what we're going to do.
Because if they don't get these, there's a whole different set of problems.
We got a different groups going, you know, on this, but.
But we do, the notes construction, they're divided state, water and sewer has received approval from the city and the state. As a result, the construction documents are, as we will stated, they're satisfactory to the point.
I think, I think we're to get everything in order first and before we act. Any other questions from the board here?
I make a motion that we pass it until we have all the information needed as far as the drainage and all of that.
Deferred.
I'm sorry.
The motion has been made to defer plat approval for PC dash zero six oh eight two oh one two one to our next monthly meeting, which July?
You got me off guard. I think it's the thirteenth.
All right, I'll go with that. I have a motion in a second.
It is the thirteenth.
All those in favor? Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Number six.
Okay. Yes, sir. It's rezoned, rezoned request, PC zero six zero eight twenty twenty-one, RZ one. Owner, Mr. Barrier, who I believe is represented here tonight by Mr. Redding and Ms. Angela Newman. If I'm not mistaken, I didn't see Mr. Barrier in the audience. The request is for the property at two oh five North Main Street. They were requesting this be rezoned from neighborhood commercial, which it's currently situated at, to R two medium density residential, which in that particular zone, that would allow for a single-family dwelling or a duplex unit. They have brought forth a letter in relation to their request. It's included in your packet. They should be all together, so I'm hoping you can access it pretty quick. Let me get back over here to mine real quick and we can discuss it just a little bit. The structure, I don't know the complete history on it, but what I've found out just talking to different folks in relation to that particular structure is, I believe, established in the late eighteen hundreds. I don't know exactly how many square feet that property does have. But it's Breckenridge, known as Breckenridge, though, Breckenridge House right there. So that's the one that they're requesting the rezon. Being in neighborhood commercial, that particular property is zoned in particular to service the general public and the adjacent houses there. I did send out comments and they have been included in your packet as well. We can go over those if you'd like. See, in neighborhood commercial, historically, the structure's been used for small business establishments, which fit the criteria for neighborhood commercial district. Intended to provide adequate area for commercial institutional uses, which primarily serve the local community. The lot is currently a non-conforming lot of record, not meeting the minimum bulk regulation set forth in zoning ordinance for the zone in which it's situated in. R two medium density, just some fine points I'd like to point out for the board. In particular, two two oh five North Main, there are no other properties in the general vicinity that are zoned medium-density residential R two. There are no other properties in the general vicinity occupied by duplex residential use. The R two district, the R two district allows for a single-family and two-family, as I indicated before. And in the comments, I've included what the Tennessee courts have defined as spot zoning. And the reason I pulled this out is because upon my review, I felt that it needed to be looked at as part of the review. And they've defined spot zoning as a process of signing out a small parcel of land for use, classification totally different from that surrounding area. For the benefit of the owner and to the detriment of others. That was a case that was heard in Rutherford County. The area that we're speaking of, you're all familiar with it. Surrounded, well, on both sides, you have one side, I believe, is going to be post office, the next side is going to be CPA office. There's no, there's parking in behind the CPA office and two oh five. But the only access is through one driveway. I don't, I don't know if the driveway belongs to two oh five or belongs to CPA office. Of course, that's neither here nor there. But the only other parking that you have is on street parking. You've got neighborhood commercial uses there that do provide the service they intended to provide. And then, that being said, you know, based off my review, I can't recommend to the board that this be a rezon to the medium-density as requested because of all of the outlying issues that could possibly cause and also the text that I gave you from the zoning text and state law as well. I do, there are two people here, I think. I don't know if they've signed up to speak on this, but they are the applicants. They are present. So unless the board has any questions.
What's that? One of the lots zoned that are directly behind this?
Directly behind the property. I've included them out there, I believe. That's the neighbor, that's the commercial downtown area. Yes, sir. So it's the, it is the light purple and it is, it's the commercial downtown area, which is the majority of our downtown area right here. I know, you know, commercial might not be a high-selling point at this time right now. Maybe that is the reason for the initial request. But I just don't, I don't think it. Not, not the recommendation from my office to be rezoned.
Did we hear from them?
And they do have a letter that is included in their application as well. I'll be glad to.
Anyone here to, to sign up to speak on this item for the rezoning, please? If you would come forward and state your name and stuff, please, for the board?
Angela Newman. So this Breckenridge House was actually built in eighteen nineteen. The oldest home in Mount Pleasant. Obviously, it was a home for many, many years. And then it was rezoned to be commercial and it had a couple of commercial building, businesses in it over the years. And now we're asking that it be rezoned back to a family, a single-family home. It's a thousand eighty-nine square feet. It has an upstairs bedroom and then it has a living room, kitchen, bathroom downstairs, all updated. It has, as you can see in the picture, the backyard is a fenced-in area. And then beyond the backyard fenced-in area is green grass to the left. That is the parking area for this home. If you look at that driveway, the driveway actually goes from Main Street past to the back of the house over into the existing residential area where you can see, it's a small picture, but there are multiple homes backing up to this particular home. So we feel that because it is already a single-family home and was built to be a single-family home. It fits in with the neighborhood right behind it. Then you have the CPA's office next door and then you have Matt Brown's photography, which is also going to be a home that's up for sale in the near future. And then the home that is just right next to that is a residential home. So it's basically this home, the CPA home, Matt Brown's, and then a residential home. So which people are already living in that. It is not used as a commercial. And then you have all of the homes behind it. So the reasoning behind this is in the commercial district, obviously, there are several commercial buildings that are, you know, rented now. There are several that are vacant that are going through the revitalization process owned by many different people, be it on Main Street, Bluegrass, the whole revitalization effort to bring the downtown to thriving and looking really good. This one particular home, I don't think, you know, is necessary for it to be a commercial property when it's surrounded by so many residential homes and other properties. I think it would and we think it would be best suited to be a single-family home. The number of properties or leased that are nice properties here in Mount Pleasant are very few and far between. They're just, I mean, homes just in general, to purchase a home are not plentiful. But when you have people that are like, hey, I just want to rent a nice place, there isn't a lot of downtown rental property. We feel that by having this home rezoned to a single-family home that would, you know, fit nicely a couple or a single person, because it's not a big house. Why not have somebody live in it that can contribute to our town thriving and the revitalization of this town? By have somebody living, living there that can shop in the stores downtown, that can dine in the restaurants, that can attend the music events, that can be a part of the community, that can walk downtown to the coffee shop. I mean, all of these things that we all want as residents to, and I live in the historic district as well on Washington Avenue. And there's nothing more important to me than just having people that want to live here, that appreciate our historical architecture and this is an amazing little home that somebody could be living in and being a part of our community instead of it sitting there vacant, waiting for a commercial business to come in. We've got plenty of empty commercial buildings that need businesses, that don't have them, that need to be fixed up, that are waiting for somebody to purchase, to love on them, to appreciate them. And here we have this one particular building just happens to be zoned for commercial that, that somebody could be living in and appreciating the historical value and being a member of Mount Pleasant community. So we would just ask that you guys would consider that from the perspective of having this home be a part of our community and having a resident live in it that could be a very active member of the community to be able to shop and dine and participate in our community events. And in turn, if they, somebody moves there and lives there, they're going to invite people to come down. They're going to say, come on down to the barbecue bus. Come on down to Town Coffee. Go to the grill, whatever it might be. And so you're going to get even more visitors coming down to visit our town. Because to me, that's what it's about. It's, it's about building our community and having people recognize how awesome our town is and why have this adorable little home. And I made the mistake of posting it for rent initially, thinking it as residential before I was, you know, that was my mistake before I was told that it was really a commercial building. And so I had posted it for rent for about a week. And I had over six people that were interested in renting it as a residential and loved the historical value it brought. And also with this home, how adorable it is with the beautiful gardens. That would also be something that we would ensure that we kept up so that it always looked really nice for the community. We would not rely on tenants to take care of it. We would make sure it stays really beautiful. Any questions?
I have none.
Maybe you have a couple for Robert.
Thank you very much. Got anyone else who wants to speak on behalf of this? Mr. Sprouse, come forward and state your name, please.
Name's Randy Sprouse. I own two oh seven next door to this property. And that property and my property is served on alleyway to get back into the back of my property. And not so much concerned about what the use of the property is. I just want to make sure that is rezoned, that it doesn't change that alleyway. Because parking is a kind of an issue there in, in, in that area. So that was concerned that that alleyway stays open, as I believe it's, it's supposed to. But if it does stay open, then the parking's going to be a little bit distant there for people to have to go to, to utilize it and all. And so does anybody could tell me if this would change that alley?
That would be some questions that we'd have to have for Robert and stuff. Robert, did you come forward?
Yes, sir.
He was asking on this alley that goes from Main Street over, all the way over to Goodlow Street through there. Is it any reason this would change if we change, you know, the board changed anything?
Not, 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 not legally or any, on any recorded document, it would not change that as such. That's correct.
We don't know the owner of the alley right now.
We do not currently know.
Not changing, but we don't know the owner.
So I guess if there was any discrepancy in the use of that alley between two, the two property owners. At this point, until somebody can establish ownership of.
That could technically happen now, though.
That could technically happen anytime. That's correct. Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. But this, thanks to your question, no. Whatever the board decide, however the board decides to act will not affect the use of that particular alley for either individual.
It's always been there forever, but then, you know.
Yeah, we, we have alley issues.
Yeah.
One thing on the alley issues, best I can remember, before an alley was closed off, all the owners had to agree to that. I've had that property there for twenty years.
Yeah, I knew you had it for a while.
And that, and that alley needs to stay there. In, in the past, I know that the, the board had always required all the existing property owners to sign off on that. Is that still the policy?
Yes, and then if that happened, it would be recorded that, that the ownership changed. So I, I have not done any homework, don't know the status of that alley, but that process is pretty much what we still use typically. It's houses backing up to each other and if you both want it to not be the cities anymore, we kind of split it down the middle and give each of them. But all that's recorded so that it's in the records of who owns the alley. I don't know the status of that particular alley.
The only other thing is, is it, to me, it would be spot zoning and, you know, where somebody lives there or not, I really don't care. But as far as the, the board is concerned, you might be opening something up on the spot.
I see that. I do, I do.
And stuff, because you've got commercial on one side and the post office on the other side. So that's the, that's just a thought that you might think about. Thank you for your time.
Appreciate it, Mr. Sprouse. Anyone else? So you have some questions?
I have a couple of questions for Robert. You know, we've got an Airbnb downtown. How's that handled per zoning for a commercial versus? And why can't a commercial also be a residential rental?
It can in the downtown.
Okay, is that not in the downtown? It's just far enough out to be?
Yeah, this is on neighborhood commercial versus the downtown.
So. Two blocks over, block over.
That's correct. In the downtown commercial, you can have residential only located upstairs.
My other question would be, I guess, is why R two and not R one?
I, that would be.
I mean, would it be a non-conforming lot under R one or?
It'd be a non-conforming lot under R one and probably, well, it's probably got five thousand square.
It's nine thousand, something like that.
And that might have been, I didn't actually put that on there. That, that comes from the applicant. So the R two request that, you know.
Because of the lot size.
Could possibly answer that better. But to myself and Mr. Hager were just discussing that several years ago, it's been several years ago, even before we updated our zoning ordinance. This was identified as C two or C three, the downtown district. And we actually amended that zoning document to reflect the availability of upstairs residential. And, you know, of course, you know, further updates for our current zoning ordinance, that might be a consideration as board later on down the road in the neighborhood commercial or at least the immediate areas right now. But right now, the way it stands, residential is not allowed.
Not allowed by special exception, eh?
It's not allowed by special exception.
What if it became on the historical list as a historical home?
That wouldn't have nothing to do with your, um, zoning on.
Yeah, but you still have to, if, if, if we were operating as, and we are operating as an historic zoning commission, but we're still waiting for approval overlay. but we're still waiting for approval overlay. So if this actually was presented as a rezone, then if they decided to do any work that would require certificate appropriateness to the historic zone, that would come through them. But that wouldn't have any bearing on what this board decides to uphold the zoning ordinance in particular. That's what we're speaking of. Hope that answered your question, it's roundabout way.
Any other questions from the board? Anyone else that'd like to speak on this matter? No, no. You want to make a motion?
I don't see how we can approve it with the spot zoning thing.
Now we've been through this.
If it was zoned the same as the residential buildings behind, could it suit the applicants?
The residential building behind are non-conforming at their use. Yes, the only reason they're allowed there as such is because they're still being used as residential at that point.
Then it'd be opening up another issue here that we're faced with before when we start zoning and stuff.
Just to speak to that a little bit, everybody's aware that there is residential dwellings down in that area, specifically behind. So we're not, I'm not looking at that during my review. I'm looking at what the current zone allows for and what each property is zoned for. The non-conforming uses don't come into play during my review. They can't. I have to go by what zoning text says. So you have my comments as, as a direct result of that. But there are existing residential around there that is not zoned appropriately and they are lying as non-conforming uses.
It'd be a great rental if somebody could figure out how to do it. But obviously, for the zoning, it's, that's not going to fly.
Is it similar to what you all face maybe in the last year or so with Glass Street?
Yeah, they have a little.
You had a request on that.
A little different there because even though he was allowed residential in the commercial downtown area, he didn't have a second story.
Yeah, okay, then there was something that.
So second story was the reason that that was denied because our city, he zone only allows for second story residential.
Yeah, remember that now?
Yeah, we're faced with an issue on South Main on some property for a business wanting to come in here, you know, and it was considered the historic.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion that we deny the rezone request for being spot zoning.
Have a motion to deny the request. You have a second?
I have a second.
All those in favor? Opposed?
Number six, Robert. So this is another rezone request. PC 0608, 2021, RZ2. Going to be in reference to lots, I think there's seven lots that are currently separated individual lots located on First Avenue. And then some of the lots are on North High Street. This was before this board, I guess, a month or two back, maybe even longer than that, in regards to a rezone request. And at that time, they were asking for R3 high density and light industrial use because it came in as a storage building on the First Avenue side. The same property, but this request is for R3, which is all high density residential. They haven't added the lots as such. But he did, in your pack, there is a plat that is shown to identify the area. Their purpose in requesting this is for future construction of townhomes on the First Avenue side and parking arrangement and duplexes on the upper level side, on the North High side. Of course, we provide, as such, private comments in direct relation to that specific request. And just to touch on that, if you don't mind, rezone request for lots nine, 10, 11, and 12 adjacent to First Avenue, lots 26, 27, 28 adjacent North High, parts of 12 have frontage on both roadways. This rezone request consists of seven tracts of land. Lot 12 has frontage on both North High and First Avenue. Lots nine, 10, and 11 have frontage on First Avenue. Lots 26, 27, 28 fronts on North High. The request states that the rezoning is for all seven tracts to be rezoned to R3 high density to support future construction of multifamily and/or townhomes along First Avenue side and duplexes along North High side. The following issues should be considered from this board in deliberation for rezoning of these properties. The R3 description states that the zone district should be located adjacent to downtown commercial activity. The district uses build two lines instead of traditional yards to establish unified appearance from public streets. There is one property in the general vicinity zoned R3, and the same owners actually brought that to this board. It's a single standalone lot on North High, you're familiar with it.
Right.
There are no other properties in general vicinity occupied by duplex residential uses. R3 district allows townhomes and multifamily units. R2 district allows single and two-family units. North High ends in a cul-de-sac, as we're all well, well aware, and does not have through access to First Avenue. 919 First Avenue adjacent to the north side of the property is zoned highway commercial. If 919 First Avenue is developed for CH commercial purposes, the properties to the east may long, no longer be suitable for low density residential, and that's what they currently are zoned as low density. High density residential units such townhomes and multifamily apartments are typically located near intersections with major road corridors. High density housing is complementary to commercial nodes and provides customer access and retail, to retail and service establishments. That's comments they're provided, and that was straight, almost straight from the text there. Just to kind of give you all the zoning of both what it is zoned and what the request is for. We do have somebody, Mr. Newton is here present tonight. He's the engineer responsible for this project. And I think he's more than willing to speak with the board. You have any questions for me? I'll be glad to answer as best I can. But that's what's before the board tonight is for rezone. And all seven tracts are being requested to be rezoned to high density for that possible future type of construction.
I'm good, we'll, we'll listen to.
Good evening, Commissioner. My name's Cole Newton, TKC Architecture Engineer. Like Robert said, we were here in February and brought rezoning for that one that did go R3. And then for this one that is, we were trying to do industrial light to do, to do storage units on the front and, and duplex townhome or duplex units on North High Street. And that section was turned down and the other R3 was approved. So we're back, back here before you with a plan that we'd set down with staff at one point in the group. The same plan we looked at in January and then kind of changed it as, as the owners' desires changed. But we're back here with, with what we think is a, we can do as a quality project. You know, it's close access to be able to, you know, get to downtown, but also get out on the highway and go o- other places, whether you go Columbia or wherever, to south or north to work. We believe we can get the parking and the, and the setbacks to work. And, and, you know, I think the products that we would build would be, you know, well-suited for, you know, individual rentals. We would keep long-term. If that lot does, we looked at several different configurations. I mean, if that lot that is just, I guess, west of it does develop into what some people think might be a service station and a gas station at some point. I mean, we're, we think we've got these lots set up to be able to, you know, no, no unit faces that, that direction. And we looked at several different configurations. But in doing some of that other stuff, the unit either the front or back would face that future development. We didn't feel that was a good, good option. And so, you know, happy to answer any other questions. But, you know, we, we sat down with staff before. And I mean, it seems like residential is something the community also is looking for. So we, we'll bring this project forward.
Very good, we appreciate it. Thank you so much for your time. Robert, are we acting on the 90 degrees rezone anyway? So.
That's correct.
Anything else, we'd have to come back to your office.
Development plan, we have to come back to the office and then have to eventually end back up with the planning commission for this type of.
Piggybacking on that, I remember when we had the public hearing last time, there was concerns of the size of the street and that. None of that has anything to do with.
No, just looking at a reason. That will all be looked at in the development of the project. It's not looked at tonight.
Tonight, the board's only looking at a rezone.
That's correct, yes. And the development would have to be suitable and, you know, by the requirements to access and so on and so forth.
Absolutely.
And the main thing is the street will have to be opened up. Otherwise, that it's not going to be able to pass anything. So they're going to have to get that through the state first.
I'd like to say that's coming a later date. Tonight, we're only acting on a rezone.
That's correct. So right now, as the board knows, it's all, it's all vacant land right through there. There's nothing situated on the property. Has been vacant ever since I've been employed by the city of Mount Pleasant. You know. And as Mr. Newton expressed when he was discussing with the board, they, they feel this is something that the board would look favorable at. And that's the reason the question for you tonight, residential being, lack of residential in our specific area. It would add certainly more rooftops. Mount Pleasant's development moves forward and meet all the requirements.
Any questions from the board? We have, we have any people here to speak on this matter? All right, very good. Anybody else? Come forward, please. State your name.
My name is Speaker Bailey. I live at 311, which the property they're talking about. All I'm just concerned is about the drainage. Once they start building up there, are they going to fix the drainage? Because right now, we have water flooding our road out there.
Like, like, like we said, tonight, the only thing this board is considering is the rezone. And, and later on, whatever happens tonight on the vote, and if it passes, they would have to come back with complete construction plans and all that would have to be submitted to Robert's office and stuff before they get.
That would have to be included.
It would have to be.
Tell me your address again, though.
311 Edgewood.
Edgewood, okay.
Got it, thank you very much. If not, I entertain a motion on this request for a rezone.
It's made on orange paper.
Now, what did the bill last time? I make a request that we pass a rezone to what they're requesting because it's going to be a long road.
I have a motion to pass the request, the rezone.
You can still use these. You can comment on the items without it being part of the motion.
Have a motion, I hear a second?
I have a second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Oppose? Motion carries for the rezone.
Chairman, if I might mention, we've got two rezone requests tonight. And whether they're denied or approved, they have to go to the city commission for the city commission to agree or deny. So there are opportunities, if anybody wants to come back, they will be on the agenda in June and July, both, both of these two items.
Are there any comments on, you don't have to make any, but for, for the minute?
Yes. Did it come off that orange sheet?
Any of these items, one through four, that you want to comment on?
Do you need to?
I say number one. You're going to go with Adam, number one. All right. Number seven, annexation request.
Now, before the board, you have, oh, there's no, there's no annexation request. I apologize.
Where you reading from?
We're good, we don't have no annexation request. I apologize.
Number eight's a site plan request.
Site plan revision, you're, you're correct, Chairman. Tonight, we have before us a site plan revision per Axe Family Church, which is located on South Cross Bridges. And Mr. Paul is representative tonight of the church. I think there possibly is some other members here. But I do know Mr. Paul's here. Has this Mr. Chet Rhodes, the engineer.
They're both on here.
The Axe Family Church approved, the approved, the initial approval from this board came as a result of a contingency that the parking lot have paved surface. There was some discussion of tar and chip during those meetings. But the final motion from this board was that it be paved surface as, you know, required by our zoning ordinance. I can't speak to, Mr. Paul is here, so he can better attest. I'm not going to say what I've had a discussion with him about. I'd rather go ahead and say that. But irregardless, the church has surfaced the parking lot with tar and chip, double-layered tar and chip provided by J.J. asphalt, I believe. And the revision that you have before you is a request that this board accept that as a change to the originally approved site plan approval, which was pavement. They provided engineering documentation, and the engineer of record is here in his form of review of the property. So both of those are here, are present. And if the board has any questions for me, I can speak to it. Now, I did include an email in the pack from Mr. Michael Black from Los Angeles Associates, and I'll, I'll say that. It should be attached there as well. But that was really the only comments forthcoming from Dow in regards to this. So that being said, unless the board has any questions for me, parties are here present to speak in regards to this request.
So in reference from this, the email from Mr. Black from Los Angeles Associates.
That's correct.
And he's pretty much emailed you what this board has recommended in our previous meetings and stuff here.
Yes, sir. I mean, it's, you have, you have the verbiage.
I mean, I've read over it, read over it, and I think everybody on this board has been through that.
That's correct, yes, sir.
All right, I'm, I'm just going to make sure we're on the same sheet of music on that. And I want to hear the other people speak on this matter, and that's fine.
I'll be glad to step aside.
All right, I'll first go with Tim Paul.
Do you have anything to share, even what you have in front of you?
Okay. All right, Chad Rose.
I, I haven't seen the correspondence from Mr. Black. I don't know what that is. But I was asked to inspect the tar and chip pavement. But I was asked to inspect the tar and chip pavement, the double layer that was done by J and J, and to do an engineering report on that as to if it was done in a workmanlike manner. Was it done well? And I also look back, and my three-page letter would refer you to that of May 2nd to Robert Archibald. I wasn't trying to address any issues to whether it complied with the site or not. The site was approved with the requirement for paving, for pavement, a paved surface. So I detailed that in my report on page two and three, that this is actually is a paved service. It's equivalent to concrete or asphalt. And as to why, there's a compacted subgrade, engineered compacted subgrade. You have two layers of tar and chip. You've got an eight-inch stone base, which is good for heavy vehicles. So I wasn't aware that we were considering a deviation from the site standards. I was trying to do a report that showed you met the site standards. So I just want you to realize, my focus was on, yeah, I remember what you approved. It had to be a paved surface and has to be done right. And so I went out there and inspected to make sure it was done right. And it's done well, and I proved it as inspected. Pretty harsh on drainage and other concerns because you don't want to have weak areas where you have settlement later. This is a very well-done parking lot. You can see, picture in the report at the front. Hopefully, some of you had time to visit it and see it.
See it every day.
And so it's a very nice parking set plot, ready to go. And I would recommend them for their, you know, approval of occupancy because they've met the site standards and the paved parking requirement. So that's where I was coming from. So am I out? I didn't know. I don't want to be out of order with what I'm saying. I have no idea what the others are saying. So I'm not trying to argue with anybody. I just wanted to know. I did an inspection as requested to verify that was done per the standards. And you have my report there and finding. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak on it? Questions from the board here?
My big question is, why did they decide to use tar and chip when it was specifically supposed to be an asphalt binder?
I agree.
I mean, it became a big issue. It became a big issue before this board and, you know, it went as far as, you know, how are we going to strike the lines and so forth and number, you know, layer off the parking spaces and so forth. You know, and.
Yes, please. I mean, this has been an ongoing issue since I've been on this board. I mean.
Right.
We can't seem to get things right.
Not the same as a tar and chip surface because that'd just be one layer of tar and chip and very loose. This is well compacted. It's done.
But it's still not asphalt binder, right?
Right.
Correct.
When we. That's it. That's it. That's all we're saying.
That's all we're asking. It is an asphalt binder, but asphalt and concrete were both acceptable paved surfaces. And that's what we're addressing here. It's an asphaltic paved surface. It's not a tar and chip. It's equivalent to basic concrete or that. And in my report, I detailed that because the whole reason the board didn't want something substandard is a maintenance issue. Because concrete or asphalt, you're looking at concrete lasts more than 12 years before you have to repave. Asphalt, if done properly, will last 12 years. And I'm certifying in this thing here, this thing's going to last 12 years as done. So it is equivalent, it's a paved surface that's equivalent to asphalt or concrete as it is. So I wouldn't say it's a tar and chip surface. It's beyond that.
You say it's a double tar and chip.
It is. That's right. So that's right. And as such, and with the maintenance it does and the eight-inch stone base under it, this is a good paved surface that's going to last as long as any other paved surface that would be required. So anyway, that's why I put the report together that I did. Thank you.
We have a million-dollar policy on our company. If it doesn't last 12 years, we can stand behind it. I mean, I'm standing behind my work. That's what I'm saying.
There is no question that you're standing behind your work. The question is what this board had recommended when this was done. This has been for this board for the last two and three, since I've sat on it, I know this issue has come up. And we had a gentleman, of course, he's no longer on the board, specifically said that night how this was going to be laid out and stuff. And that's what was agreed to, if I'm correct, Robert.
That's what the board approved. That's correct, Chairman. And that was discussed at the meeting. And it was minutes in our minutes.
In the caption, too.
This is the zoning section that allows the equivalency, if any of y'all have not looked at it.
Obviously, Michael Black is the engineer, too, right?
That's correct, yes.
Because he's saying it's not, it does not offer the same structural integrity as asphalt.
That's correct.
Any other discussion from this board here? Any questions or anyone else like to speak on?
I personally say let her move into the church.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand you.
I didn't either. What was that?
I personally say let her move into the church. I mean, if it's paved, I went out there and looked at it. Look a lot better than all the places we got around here.
So you're making a motion for a revision on the site plan request? I have a motion for the revision on the site plan request. I hear a second.
A second.
A second. Want to take a roll call on this?
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Pugh.
Yes.
Mr. Hunter.
No.
Ms. Graham.
No.
Marshall.
No.
Two, three, two.
Number nine, old business.
It's related to the issue of banning of.
Well, it's not been voted on and so I don't want to get in another argument. I don't think nobody on this board does, do you?
Oh, I don't either.
Yeah, you know, we're pretty much, you know, the board has voted. The board's voted. I would suggest you submit a solution to Robert's office and we'll go from there. All right?
Thank you.
Number nine, old business.
There is no German.
Number 10, other business.
None.
Eleven, board and staff comments.
None.
And number 12, assistance comments. I hope I've got everybody. Is anybody that's on here that I didn't get?
Get one after the meeting.
Yeah, that's a special one. Yeah. We have to end this meeting.
I need to call to make calls. So I don't have anyone on this list pertaining to this meeting right here. We'll move on. We have another issue we have to act on tonight. It's a special call meeting.
We adjourn this in the first.
Yes, I guess we better. I guess we better.
Make a motion we adjourn.
I've got a motion to adjourn in a second. Jennifer did. Thank you. I wanted to continue this first, and we appreciate it.
And before we get to the second one real quick, we just handle it like it's a brand-new meeting. I noticed on here that we're approving minutes from December 8th of 2020. That's probably the last special call meeting. I'm assuming we've probably already passed those that are regular.
I didn't get any in my package.
Yeah. I'm thinking that that is probably Teresa putting it on here because it was the last meeting.
The only thing that's allowed to be voted on on this meeting is.
So we just won't even need to address that then.
The special call. He wants to speak at the special call, Mr. Webb does. That's special call meeting.
I'm sorry.
Do you want to take the sheet?
You can use the same sheet and put special call.
Yeah, I just didn't indicate. I didn't differentiate.
Frank Webb, correct.
Oh, okay.
All right, time to call Mount Pleasant Municipal Planning Commission Special Call Meeting, Tuesday, June 8th, 2021. It says 6:30. We're going to go with seven.
That was said whichever.
Yeah.
Whichever.
Yeah. Yeah. And at this time, I'm going to ask the Pugh to do the indication and John to do the predilection. If you would, please, Sam.
You would, Bauer. First of all, Lord Jesus, we thank you for letting us gather here today, Lord Jesus, to come before you and help us to use wisdom from you, Lord, and hear out the request and make it for the betterment of our community. Help us just to be knowledgeable and make good decisions, Lord, with love and praise. Amen.
Predilections to the flag of the United States of America. Please reply for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with which is justice.
All right. Item number three is the approval of the agenda tonight. Do I hear a motion for approval?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
We have a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. On here, item number four is approval of minutes prior meeting, December 8th, 2020.
Yeah, and this is not under consideration because the only thing that was noticed in the paper for you to vote on is under eight.
All right, so we'll let the minutes. We'll skip that. Number five, plat approvals.
There are none, Chairman.
Number six, rezoning requests.
None.
Number seven, annexation requests.
None.
Number eight, site plan amendment requests. I'll let you have it from here, Rob.
Site plan amendment request is PC 011221. That's showing the original site plan that came before this board for the parking lot directly behind the grill. So that number is reflective of the original site plan that came to this board. All American Investments, represented by developer Evers Construction, requesting a site plan revision to the approved parking lot design concerning properties on South Main Street, being further identified on tax map 130 OL parcels 1, 2, and 3. Reason for request is better support for downtown revitalization. As this board is very familiar with, we've been in the process of this downtown revitalization for quite some time, number of years. And of course, Evers Construction, along with MCI, are making substantial improvements to two locations, specifically in our downtown area at this time. There was some concern with the previous site plan that got approved for the parking lot behind the grill because of the downtown revitalization efforts and what was planned for in that specific area or in one specific area of the parking lot. So as a result, CT Consultants has sent a site plan revision request and they identified the site plan. I've also included in your packet the original plan. The big document is going to be the one that you need to look at for new site plan. So they've rearranged the parking lot. I think you still have 55 parking spaces, which is enough parking that it fits within the required parking of the area. They didn't change anything to that effect. They have changed the landscape in a bit. It's fast with their new plan as well. We just recently received this and we've done our best to locate it. And Will is here as well. And he can speak if you have any questions. There were no initial concerns from me, the staff, in relation to the changes that were being made. They still met the requirements per Arizona order. The biggest thing is the changing of the parking in general and the landscape. But once again, it still meets the requirements per Arizona order.
Gone with a little bit more green area.
That's correct, yes, sir.
Great space to it.
And in one section, you'll see on the site plan, I can't remember exactly what page it is, but you'll notice gravel is identified. Gravel's not going to be there. They're going to remove that gravel as part of this developed site. And outside it, or put grass down.
Is this going to be dedicated green space? There can't be anything else done with it?
Well, that was a result of the new site plan.
Can I speak to it a bit?
Yes, just a little bit.
Can I tell you how we got here? So when we started the downtown revitalization, the idea is that you're entering into our downtown area and that corner there at Bond and South Main is kind of the entrance to downtown. So three years ago, we proposed that original drawing that's sitting right there in front of Cory, which shows on the corner a really neat gazebo that you could have musical events at, and that would be the entrance into our town. It's a privately owned lot, and with all due respect to the owner, he wanted the parking and did not want to use up that big corner for the gazebo. So the issue kind of died for a while, and then MCI got moving real quickly on the Hamilton Building, which, as you know, included finishing in the parking lot. So we all kind of revisited again and said, you've submitted this, but if you submit this with a little bit of green space area that we can use in the future, and this would be phase two of downtown revitalization, a good two, three years down the road. You still have, I think, maybe two less parking spots. And in that meeting, MCI liked that design as well as, or even better than what they had submitted. So we said, let's just stop. And they're working with CT Consultants, the downtown engineers, to put together what they have in front of you, which kind of saves that entrance for the city. So it was a win for us to get that. And then they were in favor of it because they did not lose the parking that they thought they were going to lose with that original design going back through four years. That's why it's back in front of us.
This also saves a trolley stop, it looks like, if you look at the back page.
It is a trolley stop. Now, that, I don't think is anything that's reported or anything like that, but it is one.
This is for review.
So the future use of that corner is going to be worked on probably over the course of the next three years. But I think they're just going to leave it as green space for now. If that's my understanding, right?
That's correct. Yeah, it says remove gravel in this area and bring.
It was very similar to the previous lighting plan, I forwarded that to, to, uh, Mr. McCray, uh, looked it over, uh, didn't see an issue with, uh, the new, as far as the lighting goes. It does, once again, uh, meet the requirements, uh, set forth in our zoning ordinance, uh, but that's the reason.
But there's nothing set aside saying that this is gonna benefit the city.
Not right now.
No, there's not, not right now.
It just leaves the possibility open.
Yeah. Possibility was not open with the prior design.
Yeah, totally. When we voted on the last, it would.
But I think that's the general intent of all parties, it's just that'd be something that, uh, do they deed it over to the city, all that, that's gonna, that would take some time. Obviously, I would think they're gonna want us to maintain it.
Yeah, I just wanna, I'm just trying to make sure that we're doing it for the benefit of the city, so I don't, I'm, I'm looking at it, are we approving this, and then we're creating a, a lot for somebody in the future that they can put a building on or something.
So, is that, can that happen?
Wouldn't you say, oh, I don't want you answering the question.
Does that create a viable lot?
Uh, in the downtown commercial area, what size is it? I mean, I'm not, I haven't looked at it. It's.
Armor plating.
I understand what the question is, uh, Mr. Pugh. There's nothing right now that says that that is going to be utilized for that space, um, and you're, uh, inquiring about the availability of that being portioned off from the existing parking lot and sold as an individual lot, I understand that completely.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And that.
Yeah, I agree. 24, 24, 24, 20.
Should have 50.
60, 60, 120. So it's 120 by 120 lot.
About 120 lot. It would be big enough, it would be big enough as a standalone lot, yes, sir.
That's what I'm wondering, I mean, we do this, and then they got the option to do something else. Without anything in store for the city.
That's correct, yes. Without anything being set in place at this point, it would be a viable lot.
So we got someone here to, uh, go ahead, Will.
I'm sorry, just to interject, it's a viable lot now.
Yeah.
Just an improvement, like any other project.
And it's still a viable lot, if they wanna tear apart of it.
Yeah.
A little bit.
Yeah, correct. Or they could do it now.
Correct.
Yeah, but the city's losing, I think, big parking spaces right now.
It's the, it's privately owned, the parking, parking out of the city.
It has nothing to do with it right now.
Yeah, it belongs.
Yeah. It's privately owned lot. And it was part of the, uh.
Across the street, it's all the way to across the street that they re, re-analyze.
That's part of the required parking that they had to add, in addition to.
What are they doing in the center here?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, we got someone here who wants to speak on behalf of this tonight?
Just very briefly.
All right.
Uh, Mike Reddy, representing American Investments, very good properties. Our motivation is one thing and one thing only, that was to redesign the parking lot to correspond with the phase two of the Streetscape project, which will be hopefully coming down the road. We have no intentions of doing anything with the green space other than making it part of the next phase of Streetscape project. Uh, we're actually giving up some, a couple of parking places to accommodate the design that we hired CT Consultants and Mr. Rosnick to do that would coordinate with the Streetscape project. That's our only motivation.
Very good, okay.
Thanks.
We appreciate it, thank you.
And also, if y'all want to speak to the engineers and CT consultants, if they have something.
We've got Clint Evers and James Goliath.
Clint Evers, Clint Evers Construction, James Goliath, and CT Consultants.
I'm, I'm good, they, they've answered most of our questions, and so, you know. We have anyone else here who wants to speak on behalf of this matter here tonight that we're just before the board? Do not entertain a motion on this special call meeting for the, uh, annexation request?
Make a motion we accept the site plan revision.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
None.
Oppose? Motion carries. Number nine is old business?
There is, there is none.
10, other business?
None.
11, board and staff comments?
None.
Well, citizen comments, I think we pretty much went through all of them.
We did have one.
Do you want to?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Webb. Is, is this pertaining to this article here?
This article, only about that parking.
That's it, that's it. Okay. Uh, 13, German. Your motion?
Muchly German.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Uh-huh.
Uh, go home.
Here's same one in favor. Same issue later.
Yeah, Tori, Tori wanted.